I'm here, Bill Bova, Dot Agoo is reporting for her personal record. We don't have any changes to the agenda. We were in executive session before this due to personnel issues. Let me look through here quick on the public input. If it's something not on the agenda, I'll go ahead and call your name and we can go through that. Stephanie Fogg, I think you're on here first.
Just a quick update from CCA. We're doing a beautification project. We're going to put flower planters downtown and we've had a really great response from the community and the businesses. So we have seven confirmed paid for planters and we have more in the works. So just want to let you know we're going to beautify Campbelltown and it should be nice.
All right.
With summer in spring.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. That's on the agenda. That's on the agenda. Pat Krebs, American Rescue Plan.
Thank you.
There you are.
Pat Krebs on 21 Laundromats. You're all members of LME, PSTATs, and they've been actively engaged in the American Rescue Plan and trying to educate their members on how to deal with it as it comes forth. And in looking at their latest document put on April 12th, it's a Q and A of 28 pages and it relates to the two town meetings that they had in March. And as I was reviewing them, they obviously are sharing lots of information to people who posed questions. And a couple of them I'd like to share with you because as a resident who would love to have had Zoom meetings, so like have attended four of the meetings during COVID, one of the things that they posed is how about paying for Zoom expenses and website with COVID updates? And they said, yes, that could be used, the money that you'd be giving, to improve the technology. And also the, on page 27, it suggests that the townships begin to have a priority listing for how you might choose to use the funding and start now. So what I've done is I've copied out some of the things that I've been picking up from their Q and A and their advice to members and would really encourage you to be thinking about having a community meeting and we could talk about how best to spend the money because everybody's going to want a piece of the pot. I can think of various, I won't mention them, but folks who've lost money from fundraising not happening and even Karen Huberman might need money, libraries, I guess the whole gamut. It's fascinating what you can use the money for. And you can even distribute the money to all your residents as a payment. So it's quite an interesting list and it would be fun to have a community meeting to help the residents figure out how best to spend the money and also educate them on how in the world can you take that $867,000 and use it positively.
Sure. And it's my understanding you have several years to be able to use it. I was just, I know my personal preference is to wait till all the details come out so that we know exactly what the parameters are before we spend money we don't even have.
Oh, no, you can't spend money. They're just suggesting you schedule a dial on.
Sure. It seemed to me that there was just very general, broad, sweeping statements onto what that money could be used. So I was, I personally was waiting for the details.
Interestingly, the Q and A is giving us more specifics. They're answering questions that the supervisors or the staff have submitted and they're doing kind of making jokes, posing questions.
And you got that all through PSTATs website?
PSTATs.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Jen Buschda.
Hi.
Hi.
Hey, I have an update on the town signs. As for Frank, he sent me a list. We got the information back from PennDOT quickly, which I was shocked that we got it. So we have the right of ways. I sent the information, I believe, over to you from PennDOT. There was attachments and I believe I sent it to John as well. Do you want me to send it again? You're looking baffled.
No, 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 we're working on a couple different ones. I'm trying to remember which one was which, so.
I could resend it.
Yeah, I want you to resend.
Okay. And also the, we have the right of way, from what I understand, they don't need to be reflective as long as they're not in the right of way. And they don't need to have the breakaway post as long as they're not in the right of way. The extra eight feet, Mr. Martin is here as well. So we're, Mr. Hegney down by Thistledown is totally fine with it, but he has a farm and it would go into his crops. I, I'm not sure if that was you, the township's, a recommendation for the township or if that was from PennDOT, if that's something we could possibly win.
Well, that, I mean, that recommendation was the height of the, the height of the sign would be the setback from the right of way. So if you want to, if you want to reduce that, because I think your sign is eight feet high.
Yes.
If you want to, I'm not sure how far you need to be for your, your farm.
May I just interject here? Me and Mike blows that this afternoon. The sign probably overall height is not going to be over six. It could be down to five feet. What we did was fill that in there off the road, which maybe is noticed. Yeah, give it to them. What I did, we measured, I measured 25 feet in from the road.
There's corners there.
And with Lamar having the sign there, I have to make sure that we don't hide there. And I talked to Lamar. So that's why we just might run them pictures off here this evening and I brought them along. That's what I'm just wondering.
I mean, it's, it's, at this point in time, it's on the height, the setback is on set in stone. So if you, if you want to use this, you know, whatever the setback they're looking for as.
Well, what is it?
Who's requiring the setback? PennDOT or us?
Well, it would be part of, it would be part of the township requirement. Or you can allow for a one foot setback and put it on, you know, just off the, off the right of way line or put it right on the right of way line.
You're just looking for its least impact to the field.
Yeah. I, we tried, we discussed with, I believe, Pat and Jen here, Mike, where it catches the eye and, you know, not clutter up a lot of things.
Yeah.
I've been trying to clean that whole corner up. It's, you know, buildings and all, it just takes some time.
So for a community placemaking sign, right? I mean, it can be right, it can be a foot off the property, off the property line or right of way line.
Is that a 50 foot there? Is that, is that a 50?
I don't know. I haven't seen what the right of way.
Yeah. Whoever emailed me, yeah, it was 50 foot there on the, yeah, which that's, I think it's only 33 feet on that road, but on the 322 route there, it's 50 feet. I don't have that drawing with me, but it was either sent to me and I looked it.
I mean, I personally don't have any issue with it being right against the right of way.
Yeah, I mean, neither do you.
It sounds like it would be better. So as it is, I don't know what preservation issues. I'm hoping there are none with that.
I don't think we should have any.
Okay.
I don't.
I don't know if there's any mandates on that. That's why if you keep it out of the field, I think that we probably avoid that.
I really don't think it's an issue. I think, did you see where we stuck post in temporary? I just told Mike, let's let them in, you know, for a few days, you know, I could drive and just see what I think. And yous are welcome to do it. You know, it's currently, you know, it's up to yous.
Do we need anything formal, Frank, to do any of that?
No, no, because this will be incorporated into the sign section of the ordinance. So at this point in time, if everybody's okay with the sign being on the property line or the right of way line, we'll just go ahead with that.
Is that going to set us up for issues on something else? That's my only concern.
No, because, I mean, these signs are placemaking, community type signs. They're not a business sign. So I don't, I don't see that being a problem.
Okay. That that would be the difference, the community.
The classification of the sign.
All right. Okay. Do you have anything else?
I don't.
Bill, do you have anything on that? Are you good to go?
No, I'm good. Sounds good.
All right. Anything else that you need on townships?
And we do have, both are okay with easements and I have a lawyer that's going to draw up the easements. So that's our next step.
Okay.
So then we're good with the thing right on the property line so I can get the easement part started or?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Great.
Yeah, sure.
Thanks and appreciate your efforts and police and everybody in the township.
Thank you.
And thank you for allowing us a piece of your land to do that. All right. It looks like everybody else is, something that is on the agenda, although, I lied. Mark Hauser, we don't have the ambulance service on the agenda for tonight. Do you want to add or say anything right now?
I have a question.
Okay.
And I don't know any facts. I've heard rumors that we could lose the ambulance service in South Londonderry Township or get a reduced capacity service. And I was just wondering.
So I don't think there's anything definitive right this moment to really relay unless I'm wrong.
I mean, the Lawn Fire Company is exploring options for other service. We no longer can provide a paid EMS service. That, that's the general consensus, but there's been no official action taken.
Anything else for public input at this point?
And Jack, official action on that take is would require multiple tasks at the end of the day, correct?
It would. The Fire Company doesn't decide the EMS service, the municipalities they serve do.
So if and when something happens, it would still come back to the board here and we would have to determine what service is provided for the, that is one of the actual few jobs that we must do as township supervisors.
Yeah, as well as the other tasks involved.
Right.
So it's not, it's not something we set up our figures at and make happen. I guess that's the point of the question.
All right. So then moving on, I don't have anything for township.
Hey.
Yes.
Can I interject?
Yes.
If I can get this out, because I'm actually discussing, I even have to read this. If I can ask, what's your name? Here to inform you that Lawn EMS is under dire circumstances right now and the residents need to know. Instead of allowing our successful, thriving operational EMS company to continue what we've been doing for decades, the Lawn Fire Company Board appears to be taking advantage of our success and has recently put out offers to sell the profitable side of our company, the EMS side. Not sure that's even legal, honestly. Four years ago, we were financially strained and on the verge of shutting down. Lifeline proposed to acquire Lawn EMS, which might have made sense at the time because honestly, we were pretty broke. After Lifeline EMS stated they were not willing to pay anything for Lawn EMS, they gave us a chance to get our game together and get the company up and running. And we did. Lawn EMS Board allowed Lawn EMS to dig out of the hole and myself and my crew led green for the last four years to get this company back up and sustainable. And now we're profitable and doing very well. Our community relations and bonds we have made are priceless. I was born and raised in this community. I have hundreds and hundreds of friends and family in our first due and I have a vested interest in keeping this company up and running. We are well respected in the community, have fantastic relationships with our local police departments, nursing homes, assist living facilities, and our local fire departments. Our presence at my football games, Midget Games, Knuckleball Art Show, bike races, and others is where these strong relationships and bonds are made. It is catastrophic to anyone who understands EMS world and a horrible choice to the community we serve to even consider shutting down a local ambulance. Bringing big business in to replace the community ambulance is only done to a failing company, which we're not. Lawn EMS is outraged and the community members I reached out to are outraged that this is even being considered. Our wishes are to separate from the Lawn Fire Company and merge with the Campbelltown Fire Company before we are sold out, if we can even be sold out. Lawn EMS, Lawn Fire Company, in my opinion, does not share our value and the mission and commitment we have in our community. And that's, from years I've run with them, that's what I've come to the conclusion sadly. No one can say they care about the community and also consider shutting down a successful, established community EMS agency. Two large local EMS companies, Lifeline being one of them, stated they want to continue Lawn EMS as it is and keep our 25 year relationship we've had with them. They're ALS and they like us, we're well respected with them and we get along great. So to break this bond would make no sense. I hope you will see the value of your local EMS company. I hope you will have our backs like you have for five decades. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else for public input?
I just have a question. Are you making that pitch to every township they serve at every meeting?
I don't know. Are you attending every meeting to let the townships that you serve know that or just ours?
Every meeting?
Every township that you serve, are you doing what you've just told us?
No, I got to talk to someone.
Because, because this is not, as I pointed out before, it's not a unanimous decision on the South Londonderry Board of Supervisors, so.
I'll have to reach out to someone.
You seem to have some work to do.
Have you attended any of those other meetings or any of these meetings ever?
No.
Okay. Anything else for public?
I mean, I've attended meetings, but just not regularly. I'm usually running operations.
Okay. Anything else for public input at this point? All right. Thank you. Now, moving on, I don't have anything for township officials. Jeff, do you have anything? Bill, do you have anything?
No, I don't.
Okay. John has something to unveil.
Been here a little bit over a year and I notice a new building. But one of the things I noticed here, and I know I've talked with the chief on some things until I talked with the board, is branding. South Londonderry Township, we're proud. And so on behalf of the township, we're going to do here, hang this right up front so that anybody comes in here to take a look at it. Chief has a contact with somebody that does this laser imaging on wood.
Is there already a hook there? You're really prepared.
Now if I can hang it straight.
There, okay.
I didn't practice this part.
Uh-oh. No pressure.
I'd have to lean it up.
Yeah, right.
There we go.
Thank you. All right.
So that's a little bit of the unveiling for everybody. So if there's never any pictures or any tickets, anybody knows what we're talking about. Just didn't work with the.
The TV behind us?
Back there.
Okay.
Thanks, John.
Well, thank you for taking care of that. All right. Moving on to March 9th, Board of Supervisor meeting, do I have a motion to approve those minutes? Do I have a second? All second, all those in favor? Oh, sorry, Bill. Sorry. All those in favor, aye. Our workshop meeting was canceled, so we don't have anything from there. I have bill and payroll lists from 621 and 721. Do I have a motion to approve those?
So moved.
A second?
A second.
All right. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
John, moving on to your report.
All right. Grant application was submitted by the township earlier this year with our health insurance provider. I'm happy to say that we were awarded $1,000. And with that, we purchased a bike rack, which is in the front of township building, and also a picnic table, which will be, is located outside the north end of the municipal building. Also, just a reminder, residents to obtain and renew their annual burn permits. Ordinance rules and permit applications are available on the township website. CCA is planning their annual community cleanup event in the township Saturday, this Saturday, April 17th. Volunteers will be meeting at township building at 9:00 AM to coordinate work parties. Thank you again for all your dedication and your assistance there, keeping South Londonderry Township beautiful. Arrangements have been made with Palmyra Borough for the spring street sweeping throughout the township, tentatively scheduled next week, April the 19th. Private weather permitting, the first three days or so of the week if, if everything works out. Usually it's three days. Just a reminder that the zoning hearing board meeting for the proposed cell tower located at the, what they're proposing at the east, you know, it's not the east plan.
West.
West plan. I have to type over here, sorry about that. On Legal Avenue will be held at the Campbelltown Fire Company on Thursday, April 29th at 7:00 PM. Also wanted to thank Chief Barry's Cell and the Campbelltown Fire Company for waiving the rental fee associated with use of the facility for this hearing. So thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Frank, do you have something for us for the zoning?
I do. Continue to have office hours on Thursday afternoons. I've been working with John on the Verizon zoning hearing board meeting. We have been working with a short term rental for a special exception that will go before the zoning hearing board. There was an issue with a fence that was installed on Valley Road without a permit, so we were out looking at that property. I've been issuing permits, what else? Provided information on the proposed layout for Flight Path. The weather is, the weather has broke, so we will be scheduling the crosswalk study coming up here in the next couple of weeks. And the airport and Forge Road, that intersection, we received some additional information from the previous engineer. So we kind of put the brakes on what we were doing, took a look at that information, found that a good portion of it was acceptable. And we ran some turning movement studies and will provide, we will provide the township a report on what we found in terms of attorney movements. So we've been quite busy.
I guess. Question on the short term rental, you said there's a hearing, is that scheduled or?
Not yet. Not officially.
And that's going to the zoning board?
Yes, as a use not provided for.
Okay. A use not provided for.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Patrick, do you have anything for us?
I don't have anything specific to report. I do, I would likely have comments and some discussion on some of the other items on the agenda this evening.
Okay. Thank you. Chief?
Yeah, just briefly, in March, officers reported on 247 incidents, made three criminal arrests, none of them were DUIs. Officers issued 18 traffic citations, one non-traffic citation, and 11 traffic warnings. And one other thing we're starting to talk about, bringing back National Night Out this year, might have to be in a limited capacity, but it seems like everybody's on board with same location as 2019.
And that was at the Fireman's Park? Or was that?
Middle School.
Was it the middle school?
Middle School, yeah. So still, we just started discussing it, but it's a good sign.
Okay. Thank you. Kendra, are you here from the library? Yes. Hi.
Hi. The library board met on March 16th and will meet this month on the 20th. The library is open now for browsing, computer use, copying, faxing, or 30 minute visits, and curbside pickup is also available. The library, County Library System, has received an EIN number and incorporation and the system board is looking into increasing its cyber insurance. The Palmyra Board voted this last month to increase the insurance coverage for the library's $1,159,000 collection for the remainder of the 2021. Our Springtime Tea Event, which was in place of the Vineyard Event, has been a huge success. All 50 bags have been sold and there are, however, still opportunities to sponsor books of your choosing with putting a book plate in a book in honor or memory of someone. This costs $25. The list of books is available at the circulation desk in the library. Cloth masks are also on display for purchase in the library for $5. We've made over $3,000 selling them. The 2020 Annual Fund Drive brought in $40,418.95 and we believe this to be a record amount donated by the patrons of Palmyra Borough, North Londonderry, South Londonderry. We have somebody checking into that. Smart Start Storytime is being held virtually on Mondays for babies and toddlers. And weekly bedtime stories are available on Wednesday evenings and weekly book reviews on Fridays are offered virtually on the library's Facebook page. And the librarians around town is also being held on Tuesday mornings on the library's Facebook page. Library circulation and library visitors has dropped drastically with the pandemic, but since the beginning of 2021, both seem to be increasing each month. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Campbelltown, do you have a report for us?
For month of March, there was, I thought maybe you were still on vacation or something. Yeah, I was. 51 calls, average personnel, seven, average response time, three minutes, 57 seconds. Assist to Palmyra, four times, Lawn, twice, Hershey, twice, West Townover, once, Quentin, once, Lawn Ambulance, 13, Lifeline Ambulance, four. There were three building fires, six brush fires, 16 medical assists, seven accidents with injuries, three accidents with no injuries, one gas leak, five public service, three canceled en route, and four automatic fire alarms.
All right. Thank you. Lawn?
We responded to 30 calls.
Sorry, I didn't know you were giving the report today. I left it, Jack, and then there was a voice.
Did you have?
I haven't.
No, no.
Sorry.
I'm trying to read along the phones if you have. 30 calls, one building, four brush, one medical assist, three motor vehicle accidents with injuries, two without, one miscellaneous, 11 dispatch canceled route, seven weather related incidents. Of those, 18 to South Londonderry, one to the north, four Conewago, four South Anvil, one to Dairy, one to Mount Joy, and one other municipality.
Okay. Thank you. Anything on Palmyra area rec and parks? Nothing? Okay. In our packet, I have the authority minutes, planning commission canceled, district commission, I hadn't got anything, and fire board wasn't this month. Is that correct? Okay. Moving on to old business, Flight Path sidewalks, proposed plan. Chad, do you have anything to add or tell us or?
Well, just, I mean, I got Frank's information from his previous email and it seems like we're pretty much in line. My main question was, I had thought originally we agreed to a three inch defined binder. It seemed, I mean, is that a big issue? They have two in, two in 19, one in half in Waring. So that's what I thought we talked, had addressed before.
I don't ever remember having, I mean, I don't really care, but I don't, I don't remember having a type of material preference or conversation.
I mean, I remember the conversation, I'd be in the cadom. I don't remember.
Yeah, that was all I know.
You know, the material. So, I mean, our recommended material is a suggestion for the township to consider. If, you know, Chad wants to go with a different material thickness, I'll be happy to, you know, take a look at it and see if that.
I mean, with a walking surface, you really want fine binder. I mean, I'd sooner, personally, I'd sooner see the whole thing top. I mean, you're not driving on it.
Well, and that's fine too, just to do two layers, it seems crazy.
For a sidewalk.
For a sidewalk or walking path. So I'd be fine with that as well.
Well, once you get me your suggested change and, and if we're okay with it, is the board okay with?
I'm fine. The only thing with fine binder, sometimes it's nice and sometimes it's not.
Depends on the weather.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm fine with, I just, to be honest, just to run two runs down that is.
I don't see any need for that myself with a sidewalk.
The only other question I have for clarification is, do we, is it a must that we're doing the thermoplasties versus just painting? I mean, I know where you're getting all this stuff, but.
So I did ask that question because the initial installation, I believe, would be, would be your responsibility, the long-term maintenance would end up being the municipality's responsibility. And painting it, you'll be out there multiple times prior, you know, before you have to replace the thermoplastics. So that was our recommendation and according to our, our traffic guys, that's, that's a requirement for the thermoplastic.
I would agree.
What are we putting down here? Are we putting all this? Am I seeing that correctly?
I think this, those are just.
Are those just proposed?
Yeah, this is just four ways standard.
So we're doing, we're not doing this?
Our recommendation would be what's on the bottom right hand.
I was looking at this page.
He had him circle the details.
Yeah, so this page right here, that's the, the yield line. So that would be the morning.
Okay.
Basically on the CAD. And then the crosswalk itself would be the parallel two lines.
Okay.
Only thinking is, again, long-term maintenance. When you have to go out and replace it, it will be much more.
I'm just asking, how much thermoplastic are we responsible for? Those lines that you just showed me and then the arrows?
Yeah.
After the first time?
After the first time.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Do we need any more direction? You're going to get whatever CAD.
I mean, I'm fine with what he's saying. Yeah.
Okay.
I can send you.
Yeah, just send me your suggested material and if we're okay with it, and we'll coordinate with John and.
And I think, do we have, do we need to do a contract of sorts then? Is that where we're going next? Or what were we doing with that? Because we had a timeframe that we had spoke about at the workshop. Do we need anything? Or are we good to go with this?
These are all based upon deferments from years past. Why don't you figure out the material? And once you're, you're ready to go, then we can determine if we need anything. If anything, you might have to just document the fact which deferments we're calling up and which are being satisfied as a result of this. But other than that.
Okay, so I just didn't want to prolong it another six months or year.
Because I mean, we're ready to go. So, I don't, I mean, what you have to document for deferments, but I'd rather not wait.
You're ready to go, like you're ready to install it?
Yeah, like, I mean, start prepping tomorrow.
Well, that's much better than October 2020, whatever we said.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, we talked, no, it's not even that. It's that, either way, that's in the way. It's just, it doesn't look like asphalt's going to go down. So there's no point in waiting until October. We know what we have now, so.
So it is a, proposed as a five-foot-wide walkway, which is standard for handicapped accessibility.
Okay. If, yeah, I'm great. Awesome. Yes?
So maybe, I'll send you an email because I can restake it for you.
Okay.
That way you can look at that one corner.
Okay. If you can stake it between now and Thursday afternoon.
Okay, I can do that. They can do it tomorrow.
I would like to propose then, that if that's the case, John, would you, or if you're okay with this, and Bill, if you're okay with this, to propose to send a letter to the other resident, letting them know this doesn't take them off their deferments. This was an agreement between Weaver's Properties and that is it. But their properties are still under the same initial land development plans that they were under. Are you okay with that? Jack?
I am.
Bill?
That's exactly.
Patrick, anything?
Yeah.
Okay. Just so that they're not thinking, oh, that's done. Now we don't ever have to worry about it again?
I would just make sure the materials, everything that's being done is somehow between, if it's between the two and in the net, make, or light path, make sure it's very clear and everyone's on the same page.
Well, and it's not really a difference in material, it's a difference in mix and application, but it's, it's pretty much the same thing.
Okay.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you. I think it'll be a wonderful improvement. I saw people walking over there the other day in the road.
Back to the meeting, what kind of better improvement?
And what would I do on the first few days I was on the wall?
You would miss us. Thank you.
We've got the dome to talk about, Chad. What's that? We've got the dome to talk about then. So you're working on that already?
I'll be back.
Thank you. Nice one.
Okay, I couldn't let that.
We had to rub it in. All right, moving on. 198 Hummingberg Road. Frank, can I turn that over to you, too? Or do we have a representative here?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Good evening. I'm Jim Hartman with Honor and Gia Company, here to represent the officials in the subdivision. Basically, it's a minor subdivision, considered by add-on plan. The official zone, 1.101 acres long Hummingberg Way, and they are in negotiations or agreements with Donald E. Bowman to have 1.9 acres transferred to them. That would be added on to create a 3.001 acre lot at that point in time. Have been through over two second set of comments. It seems administrative in nature. There is a waiver that would need to be voted on. And there's a non-building waiver that is currently resides with the municipality. I was speaking to John. John wanted to, I guess, get input from the supervisors to make sure that it was signed to send to Lebanon County, who deals with the DDP issues.
There's an existing or a proposed?
Oh, that I said, that I said.
No, I'm asking.
It's a, it, because we are not proposing any new sanitary sewer, it's a non-building waiver.
Right. I just wanted to make sure we were talking about a proposed, not an existing.
Correct.
Gotcha.
Anything to add?
So, as Jim said, it's a lot addition plan, pretty straightforward. I did provide a comment review letter. I placed that at your desk.
Yep.
So it's dated April 12th, 2021, review number two. On that review letter, it indicates section 5.04(c), the waiver of existing features. A planning commission did recommend approval of that waiver, and they also recommended approval of the plan. So for this evening, the board would act on the waiver request, and then I would act on the plan subject to our April 12th, 2021, review number two letter.
I have May 10th, or March 10th. I don't have April something.
That was the original one.
Yeah, I just.
Is it? Did you? Okay, I'm sorry. I was looking at the, it's here somewhere. I'm sorry. Thank you. Here, I'll share with you. All right. So, do I have a motion to approve the 5.04(c) waiver?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Do I have any questions from anyone? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Do I have a motion to approve the plan conditional on the April 12th bullet points that need to be satisfied prior?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions about that? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Wonderful. Do you have anything else you need from us?
I do believe so.
All right. Thank you, sir. Sorry for not seeing you to start. All right. You, too.
Jim, I'll get these. I'm going to sign the work on there. Yes, John, I'll stop. Thank you.
Hi. I might have stole yours. I don't know. There's papers everywhere here. Here, look, here it is. Maybe this is yours. I don't know. Another one. Okay. Moving on to letter of support for AARP community grant submission by the CCA. This letter just is in support of a project that the CCA is trying to accomplish and get a grant for the community park. Do you want to add anything about that?
There.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you tell us your name? Andrew?
Andrew, yes.
It's for purchase and installation of a pavilion for the community park. So it's an AARP grant for livable communities. The grant in total would be about $35,000 to support that purchase. And 1450 of that we're hoping to match with existing funds from Mark Hare's shale grant. The letter of support is that the township supports this project and will provide ongoing maintenance around the pavilion.
If you're successful getting the grant?
Oh, yeah.
Yep. All right. Do I have a motion for me to sign this?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any questions for anyone? All right. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right. Moving on. New, oh, I'm sorry.
Andrew, what I'll do is we'll get that signed tonight, and because we have a deadline of tomorrow, you got to get that in the mail, and I'll get a copy for you, and we'll take care of it. I got it.
Do you have the one you want me to sign? You want to?
It's in your.
It's, oh, that's right. I'm sorry. Okay. Moving on to new full-time police officer hire. It is recommended, we had several people apply, and we have it narrowed down and recommended that we hire, can I say his name? Can I introduce him? John Richard Dangler. He's sitting right over here. It is recommended, we have to officially vote on it, so you guys are all clapping early, but.
We like her bit.
I think he's going to do a fine job if, if he's awarded the position. So do I have a motion to approve John Richard Dangler to be our new full-time officer?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any questions? Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Welcome aboard. We're very excited to have you.
Thank you.
Would you tell me about the 20-minute speech thing that you have to go through?
Did you want to say anything? No pressure. You don't have to, but you're more than welcome to.
I'm just looking forward to working with all of you, and it's an honor and blessed to be here at some point every time, and to say at least. So, have a beer. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Your official start date is, did I see Sunday?
Sunday, the 19th.
Sunday. So, yay.
18th.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right. Moving on to historical commission vacancy. John, do you want to do that quick? I need to find it.
I was going to say.
Oh, thank you.
We have a, we have a part-time administrative assistant position first.
Oh, did I skip? I'm sorry. All right. So we had a part-time police administrative assistant leave us, and we went through advertisements for that position, and we have recommended.
Michelle Demlinger.
Thank you. See, I set you up for that. Did I?
Remlinger. Oh, I said Demlinger. I'm getting mixed up here. So, Remlinger, Remlinger, sorry about that. Doc, did you hear that? Redlinger, an R. Sorry.
Can you say D?
All right. Do I have a motion to approve her hire?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Do I have any questions? All those in favor? Aye. Okay. Sorry about that. Okay, so now historical commission. We had somebody who is interested in being on that. His name is Sean Martin. Do I have a motion to approve him?
I don't know, Mr. Martin. Is anybody?
Is Sean here tonight?
Don't know him either.
I haven't had a privilege of meeting him, but I know he lives in Mount Gretna, and he's been lobbying to get on to some sort of a board commission some sort, and this happens to be the one that.
He's willing, I guess I'm willing. So moved.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. All of us in favor? Aye.
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 So he's fulfilling out somebody's term? Do we know how long?
Yes, it's through 20, December of 2022.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Moving on here to the bid results from 2021 road projects. John, I'll, can I give that to you?
Yeah, what we did here was, we had the annual 2021 paving job that went through, oh, what's the online, not to a star.
Pen bid.
Pen bid, there you go. Thank you. And we've accumulated some money from last year of unspent liquid fuels funds. And ultimately, there were three roads that we looked at that felt were necessary. Thresher, Springbrook, and Lawn Hill Road. And so the low bid on those areas came in from Pency Supply.
Bless you.
And.
Sorry, I had to mute.
Okay.
For Pency Supply. And then in addition, there was a road, is it Mountain Wilson Road, a portion of that, that Sunoco had gone through?
Mount Pleasant.
Mount Pleasant, I'm sorry. Mount Pleasant, that they had, did some damage to, and we received a $50,000 supplemental payment on repairing some of the damage on that roadway from when they were in there. And so we bid that as an alternate. So that also came in in the bid. And so the recommendation is to use the low bid of Pency Supply of both the base bid as well as the alternate bid, and it comes in at $406,000. So we'll pick $50,000 that we got from Sunoco, along with the liquid fuels funds, and that basically takes care of some of the road projects on the first motion, I will say.
Okay.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
At the same time, while we were doing the advertising of this, we put another contract out there, bid, basically requesting that if there was, be some road surfacing, micro surfing could, could be done on three roads. And I don't have those with me right now or, hold on. I do have them. Brookwood Drive, Forest Circle, and Woodbridge Drive. Originally back last year, late last year, we estimated it was about $165,000 to do those micro surfacing of those jobs. And when we did the bid, competition drives price down, and it came down a little bit of 114,000 some odd cents. And so the recommendation is that we also do that work at that, this bargain basement price, because the roads are only going to get worse, and then there's going to be more repairs necessary. It's going to drive the price up. So the recommendation is to use some of the reserve operating funds out of Fund 95 to take care of this deferred maintenance.
Do I have a motion to do that?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Do I have any questions? All those in favor? Aye. All right. Anything else, John, on that?
No.
Okay. So now, moving on to the proposed Verizon cell tower. The zoning hearing meeting is on April 29th, 2021. As the board of supervisors, we have, I'd say, three options. One, we take no stance. Two, we take a stance, yes. Or three, we take a stance, no. And that's just yes or no recommendations. We have no bearing on what the zoning hearing board actually decides, correct?
Correct. The zoning hearing board is the body that's going to hear the evidence from the applicant and make the ultimate decision. The township board of supervisors, by way of the MPC, you're entitled to party status at that hearing if you want it. The question is if you want it. If you want it, do you want it just to kind of oversee and maybe get some conditions on whatever decision the zoning hearing board were to issue, or you want to actively oppose the application? But you're entitled to party status as the board of supervisors at those, at this zoning hearing board application.
Okay. Jack or Bill, I would ask if you guys have anything you want to add first before, there's obviously people here to speak or ask questions.
I don't.
Do you have anything, Bill?
Uh, not right now.
Okay. So I'm going to find the attendance list here and see who signed up, and we'll go through one by one.
And just so. Other?
Yes. Go ahead, Bill.
People should know I was on the notification list because I live in Fissledown, which people might not know. So that's all.
Okay. Did you want to say something else?
It might, it might help. My understanding, after looking at the zoning hearing board application, is that the applicant is requesting three variances, one being a use variance.
Four variances. There was a paving, there was a.
Access drive, paving the access drive.
Yeah. Okay, I don't know if I've seen that one. But, and then there's two-dimensional variances being requested with respect to setbacks and whatnot. And then apparently there's this additional variance that they're now requesting with respect to paving. Again, this is a case that'll be before the zoning hearing board, for the zoning hearing board to decide. And that, in a nutshell, I don't know if you want anything else from me at this point.
I don't think so.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
But Bill was stating that he received a notification because he lives in the development.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Sure. Thanks for catching that. I didn't see that. Sarah Rogers?
Yes, I just wanted to know if you guys are going to take a position on this?
I, this is the.
Stand by.
Or you're waiting. I don't know.
Well, this is the first time, so we can't discuss stuff.
I can't influence them or do anything. It's their deal.
Oh, no, no. I mean, us as supervisors, we can't talk privately about this. So this is the first time the three of us are even talking about it. So I would like to listen to what you all have to say first before I say anything. And I would imagine.
I have no position.
Jack and Bill are, he has no position. So I don't know if he'll change his position, but we'll see. Yes, Bill, go ahead.
But no, to, to be clear for people that aren't used to attending those meetings about us talking ahead of time, that's by law. That's not because, hey, we don't want to talk about these ahead of time, but legally, we cannot. We would be in violation of state law.
Good point.
So just, just kind of so you back around.
Thank you.
Understand.
Now, to clarify that, maybe one step down the road, if this board were to authorize me to potentially go and oppose the application, we would arguably be in litigation. We could have certain conversations with respect to litigation in executive session with respect to that specific case. But that, we're not there yet?
We're not even close to that yet.
Sometimes that happens.
That's the lawyer speaking now. Just joking. Thank you, Patrick. I appreciate the clarification.
Understood.
No, I appreciate it. Okay, Sarah, did you have something you wanted to tell?
I didn't know that this, I thought maybe it'd come up before you guys had seen meeting minutes for, from the municipal authority about this.
We did see the minutes. We did have that in our packet, yes. So there was some Cliff Notes of what was discussed, yes.
So the only thing that everybody in this town is having a problem with is that it's based, it's, they want a variance in from low-density residential, which does not allow this tower to go in there.
Right.
They all, we also would like to know why the sewer, not the sewer authority, but why they were allowed to sign a contract in Dairy without looking at, I know that's not their job, the zoning laws, but no one took a cursory glance at, like, scrolling through real quick on Christmas break to say, ooh, maybe we shouldn't sign this. And that, because of flood zone, the flood zone that's going to be in, and all the other extraneous factors, why it cannot be moved, or the sewer authority cannot go back to Verizon and say, we would like this part of our 2505 Brent Road complex instead of the one only allowed it.
Well, first off, I'll say I would be surprised if the municipal authority signed a contract yet, because they have to go through the zoning hearing board. So if they did sign a contract, they're.
They signed it uniform.
It was contingent.
It was contingent.
Based on the zoning hearing board. So that would be standard with anything. And if you were going to buy a house, it would be standard on whether or not you're able to do, like, if you had a variance that you want to run your house.
I understand. I just didn't know that they were, not go rogue, but allowed to sign something, and then.
That's what happens when nobody goes to meetings.
I, I'm not getting involved with that. Everybody's been doing a good job until I found out about this. I mean, you guys do your job. I'm able to flush my foot, nothing happens, like, nothing happens back in my basement, so.
You have to go to more meetings than you figure out what's really good.
It's my.
You might not be happy.
I think it was just a shock when everybody got a letter from Verizon's lawyer saying that this is showing up.
So I guess I would say to that, that's not uncommon practice. So I guess I would say to that, that's not uncommon practice.
Okay.
That, I mean, that's, right? I mean.
Yeah, I mean, listen, a lot of your questions aren't necessarily for this board to.
No, no, I know that.
Questions that should be posed at the authority.
Yes.
But, yeah, I mean, having a lease agreement contingent upon zoning relief is, is not that abnormal. It's, it's normal.
And that, and even if you're doing something to your resident, residents, right? The same thing would happen. You would go, well, you would go, and, and then the zoning hearing board would be responsible to let the neighbors know, or you would be responsible to let the neighbors know. I mean, same process, so it is no different.
Like, it's just all of a sudden just showed up, and now everybody's hot and heavy on this, which, I understand this is how it works. But, you know, there's some other options that we think that maybe could be beneficial to them while they still get their rent money and are able to keep their prices the same, or maybe raise it minimally.
So those are things I would bring up then at the zoning hearing board and ask the Verizon representatives and the municipal authority. Or, well, I don't know if anybody from the municipal authority would be there, but the Verizon representative should be there at the zoning hearing board.
Yeah, I mean, definitely Verizon, it's Verizon's application, the owner, the owner of the property is the authority. So someone from the authority maybe had that hearing, or maybe testimony with respect to the deed or the lease. You never know.
I'm not sure.
They're being recommended to be there.
Okay. So, uh, again, those are questions that we.
I was just going to know if you guys are going to take a position at any point coming up with all this.
Yes. I, I was just going to.
Wait, 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 ma'am.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. I just want you to state your name so that we can at least have it in the minutes, because I don't recognize you. I'm sorry.
My name is Darlene Franchello. I live on Bolton Drive at Fissledown. I'm the closest property. The variance says they have to be 500 feet from a residence. My property line is 277 feet from where this was built. So of course, I'm really upset about this. I don't know why the zoning board, we have these laws to protect us from this happening. So I don't know why they would allow you to put this half the distance of what the zoning laws require from some.
They haven't, just so you know, they haven't yet. You understand that, right?
Right. We, I have to tell you, we left here the other night really discouraged because we were told they had to sign the contract. And even if the zoning board turned it down, Verizon has three to five years to continue to fight it in court. So we were pretty discouraged because we'll be coming to these meetings for three to five years, is kind of the pressure we got, which is okay. You guys seem like really nice people.
Stick around.
But, um, no, I was just curious what you, I apologize. I'm a nurse. I don't know all the legal jargon. As far as entitled to party status, what that means, and can you take a stance against that? What does, could you explain that?
Again, so this isn't the zoning hearing board, okay? When you go, I'm assuming if you have an interest and you, and you want to go and you want to have your voice heard, you're going to go to the zoning hearing board hearing.
Right.
When you go there, uh, the solicitor or the zoning hearing board members, they'll probably ask if there's anyone, if I was the solicitor, I'd ask, is anyone here that is requesting party status? And that's when they'll probably give a quick overview as to what that means. And again, I don't represent the zoning hearing board. I'm not going to give you legal advice. But basically, what it means is that you have the ability to appeal the decision, you'll be, have the ability to present evidence if you want. Now, if you live five to 10 miles down the road and you don't have an immediate interest, the zoning hearing board could find that you don't have the right to be a party in the case. But you living 270, you're actually, the 277 feet, I think specifically referenced in the application.
Yes.
Yes, that's me.
Again, I don't represent the zoning hearing board, I'm not the solicitor, but the chances are you will have party status if you want, if you want.
And, and, but you as a board also can have a stance as.
We, the, wait, the, the Board of Supervisors is entitled to a party in any case before the zoning hearing board by way of statute. If we want to be a party to it, we're a, we're a party to it.
Because we've elected you to help represent us, and our community is up.
You have elected us, yes, to represent you.
Right, but I mean, that's why you would have a stance in trying to support what.
That's how the code is written. I mean, that's how it's set up.
I'll tell you, it's not, I mean, occasionally getting, uh, an application that the, normally these zoning hearing board applications are brought to the attention of the board. If it triggers an interest or a specific concern, the board can take an, can take a position at the hearing. Uh, but they don't have to, and they normally don't. I think I've been to one in the last four or five years.
It'll almost be six because you started when I started. Just letting you know.
So I'm just curious, is this something you would consider? Does it rise to that level?
Patrick, I have a question.
Yes.
So, if we find, if we want party status, do we have to take a position at that point?
I think we'd have to give direction to Patrick as to what, what we want.
Right, because, I, I, I mean, I, I think, I do think this was handled badly. Like, it looked like, I mean, honestly, if you got the letter, it looked like, well, after you were doing this, I get it. I, you know, have represented, in fact, I, you know, self income, you know, I, I just, but it just, there was no, like, attempt to reach out to the community by either, you know, either the authority, you know, or Verizon. And I, I just, I have an issue with that. Um, so, I, I mean, I'm not saying I'm taking a position for or against. I also like my cell phone service and, you know, um, and realize this important infrastructure, uh, thing going, you know, forward. Um, but, uh, yeah, I'm not real happy. Uh, and my neighbors, um, that I've talked to are not real happy. Um, obviously, I'm impacted and, you know, how, you know, my voice heard at that time, but, I, I, I want to get involved. I mean, that's, that's, I, I don't want to take a position here and now on, like, what that is, but I, you know, I, I want to know the options. Like, what are the options? What are the options to do what Verizon wants to do without just doing this? And I, I just, I don't think the municipal authority vetted that. I don't think they would vet it. Um, I know we would if, if it was our land, um, which it's not. Um, but that's my issue, that, that, you know, no one really seems to vet this or ask for, uh, alternative other than, hey, we're not, you know, we're going to ask for all these variances.
So the only thing I'll say.
We, we, sorry.
No, that's okay. Yeah, of course. Go ahead.
Yeah, sorry. We criticize homeowners all the time, right, for not knowing, you, you know, when they come to us, we can't resolve some things. I don't mean we criticize homeowners, but, you know, you buy a 300, 400, 500,000, very dollar home, and people don't know, oh, that's a commercial lot next to me. Or there's a, you know, there's an easement or a water easement on my property. We try to walk them through that, but there's not really much we can do because it, you know, it's in the deed, right? I mean, I think we need to educate people in schools on this stuff. But same applies for, frankly, the authority, um, or Verizon. Like, they know they have to get variances to do this, and they haven't proposed any alternatives. So that's where I'm.
Okay. Um, the only two points I'll make is, um, I want to say it was probably, John, you're here a year now, a year and a half now.
Year and a quarter.
So it was probably two years ago that I heard of Verizon even looking at the area. It was nothing definite. Um, they were over at the municipal authority land. Were you contacted at all at that point, Patrick? Did we ask you who that land was? Do you remember anything about, Jack?
Not at the time.
I remember we talked about it because of the way it's listed on the deed. It appears that the township owns it.
Um, so that was the first time I heard about it, but it wasn't anything concrete. They were still looking around other areas.
And wasn't it at that time, a, one of these, like, telephone pole mounted micro?
I remember thinking, well, it shouldn't be that big of a deal because there's already a cell tower on Campbelltown Fire Hall land, and most people don't even know that that's a cell tower. So I remember thinking it wasn't going to be that big of a deal, and it was going to work out that the municipal authority would get some payment over time for that, and it seemed like a win-win. Um, but there was nothing definite, and I hadn't heard anything more until here we are today. So.
And you know that's not what they proposed.
I've seen the drawings because I, I asked, I'm like, what is all the talk about the cell phone tower? I said, John, can you send me over a picture of what this looks like? Because it didn't seem like a big deal to me, and I know that they do do good, I won't say good, they do try to make them look like other things. And the first thing I thought of was when I'm down south, I see palm trees, cell towers. Um, but then a friend of mine looked up pine tree ones and that sort of thing. So they do try to disguise them sometimes. But that's as much as I know. And I am with Bill. I do like my cell phone service. I get a little annoyed in Springbrook Farms because I lose it.
Does Bill care the alternative that we've talked about?
I don't know.
Bill, or do you want to?
I'll see you later.
Oh, because the other, the 10 acres of land over by the net, there would only be one variance required to put it there. Township could still get their money.
When you say township, it's.
Sewer authority.
The authority owns that property.
Yep.
Thank you for the correction. Yeah, I think the height variance would be the only one, correct?
And, uh, no, maybe a driveway.
Oh, the driveway.
Is that over by the airport is what you're speaking of? That might be harder.
No, it's in Zone 3, same as the one that they want to put right here. And it's just Zone 3.
Oh, okay, the same zone.
On Google Maps, it's the same distance from the airport. She has more information on this than anyone I know.
Good.
One thing, uh, that might be in the flight path, the airport. See, I have a cell tower, and that comes right close to that flight path, which, you know, I'm east of here.
Yeah.
So that is probably one thing that will hinder them from going just anywhere.
You're talking about like the airport protection zone and the zoning, like the height requirement if it's.
Height and distance.
It sounds like Susan Rogers here has done, Sarah, I'm sorry, has done her homework and knows it's Airport Zone 3.
Zone 3.
So, yeah, whatever that dictates. But again, that would be something a zoning hearing board.
I just wanted to know if you guys are going to come with a, make a position tonight or have one leading up to this. That's all I wanted to know tonight.
Anybody else have more comments? Yes, sir. Did I miss you? I'm sorry. I didn't get through the list yet.
My name is Steve Culver. I also live in that neighborhood, and I would like to request that the board, uh, make some recommendation on behalf of the residents who are very concerned about this and would need a counsel to suggest alternatives or at least request that we evaluate some of these alternatives. Because, I mean, we don't know anything about this, but we've come up with three or four ideas. Sarah spent a lot of time researching this because it really is causing us some, some heartache. And as you probably can guess, we suspect it could affect property values. There might be some precedent set here somewhere else or whatever. We don't really know too much about this particular law or behavior, and we don't attend any of these meetings. Sorry about that, but.
You're welcome anytime. It's always nice to see more faces.
I do find them very interesting. It's just, you know, it's just a difficult thing. So we don't really want to, and we're happy letting you make these decisions. Normally, normally it's great, but this one we're pretty unhappy about, so.
That's what people usually show up.
We noticed that.
So I think there was a, there may have been one or two other things here. Um, there's a very small amount of money that the sewer authority supposedly is getting, but it seemed like paying for services and just supporting the sewer that way makes a whole lot more sense rather than renting out the space and the small piece of land on their property there at the expense of everyone has to look at it and have to depreciate their property value. And I guess there's some possible health risks and concerns. I guess that may be written off by the FCC legislation or laws that have been passed that don't, don't tie you guys to that, but it still means we have to live next to it, as do you who live there, including, uh, Bill, who's a neighbor of ours. And I would hope that he would join us and say, you know, please let's allow you alternatives, uh, before we approve these variances, or recommend that they approve the variances, or do what we can because we're really kind of imploring you here to help us at this point. And we don't have a whole lot of options, as you, you probably know. We feel like it's going up 95% chance. What can we do? We can come here, we can complain about it, we can try to think of possibilities. It's not a great situation to be in.
If I can make a point, Steve, that sent the note to the board earlier today.
You were the gentleman that sent the email?
Yeah, I sent you guys an email this morning just to let you know that those were concerns that I had and just to make you aware. And if you wanted to share your opinion, I was really curious. I still am really curious. And whatever we can do to, you know, to move in that direction, if possible.
Thank you for making that connection because I saw it this morning. I read through it quickly, and then I worked all day, so I didn't get to see it, to respond to it. Do you, or does anybody else want to say anything else before we, yes, Jane?
The meeting's supposed to be in the fire, fire department?
Yes.
Campbelltown Fire Department?
Yes.
Could you make sure that the seats are placed for social distancing?
We don't have any control over the zoning hearing board.
Well, could, could someone suggest to them that because COVID, the incidence of COVID in Lebanon County is again higher and was listed as substantial, I saw today, and as a microbiologist, I would hope that you would, uh, have the township and the zoning board be more respective of their constituents.
Okay, I'm not going to make any recommendations to the zoning board as to how they should set up the room. Yes?
Would you want the, the thing set up like this?
I'm not going to make any recommendations on how that room.
For bingo with the tables.
I'm not going to.
Because the chairs are social distance for bingo, if you allow the tables.
The zoning hearing board can set up the meeting however they see fit. I'm not going to make any recommendations for it unless Bill or Jack, you feel strongly one way or the other. Bill, did you want to say something?
No, okay.
Okay.
No.
All right. Um, does anybody want to make, Bill or Jack, do you want to make a recommendation?
Well, just before we do that, I was trying to hear everybody. Like, so I know it's frustrating, but that's the process, and that's the only time anybody ever finds out about it. And unfortunately, that's the way it is. The good part is, is the decision's not made, and that's why there's that due process. And while you may not be happy with what they're requesting, there's a lot of people that have gone through that zoning hearing, uh, request in the past couple of years that are pretty happy with what they got, including neighbors, you know. So the process exists for a reason, you know, and, and this may not be a popular one, but that, that's why it's there. We have no control over the zoning hearing board. We appoint the members, and we may regret it later, but after we appoint them, um, you know, that, that's where it lies. And we don't, I personally don't normally recommend, Patrick, oh, we, we try to, me, I shouldn't say we, try to manage that from a distance, that, that, that's their process. That's, that's their stage to set, and we don't. In this instance, I, I'm not opposed to the tower. I don't think it really fits where they're trying to put it. Um, but every, it's, you know, I, I just laugh when I see all the posts on Facebook, you know, everybody's using the data to, to do these things, but nobody wants the tower in their backyard. That being said, I, I would certainly hope there might be a better place for it than, than that. You know, if, if someone could provide me, uh, you know, some type of, if someone could convince me that we just have to have it there and, you know, it, we just need it, and there's no other option, would I consider it? Yeah, I would probably consider it. However, I haven't seen anything that, you know, I haven't seen a shred of that that, that indicates that this is the only option, and it's the best option, so.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah, I guess that's my question and concern. Um, Jack is like, why would they do that if we don't take a position? Like, I, I, I would like to know what options there are. I mean, I've dealt with engineers, I've dealt with these companies. I, I can't imagine that that's the only option they have. This is hard for me to fathom. It could be.
Yeah.
It's hard for me to fathom that it is.
Those, and the style, that style of antenna looks horrendous. I mean, it just got to be enough, there's got to be a better way. But that being said also, I bet there's 50 of them you drive by every day and don't know that they're there, so.
Now, what about the one you mentioned that looks more like a pole? Could we put another one there?
I, that, again, that would be something up to Verizon, right? So I'm sure that they've probably done their due diligence as to what the best spot for them, I'm, I'm assuming, I don't know. I'm, you know, I would assume they've done their due diligence for them to get the best reception, the best productivity, whatever, right? And that's the area that they picked, but I don't know.
We were told they were dropping calls in the net. So we're like, why do they want to come over here if the drop calls are in the net?
I don't know any science behind that.
Did they communicate that?
Well, and, and those were some of the rumors that are going on. Again, nobody, I can't say that the questions that you guys raised at the authority meeting has ever been addressed directly to Verizon.
Yeah.
And I think that's the point that I'm hearing, the, the, the resounding issue from you guys, that you need a spokesperson to make sure you hit these comments and push back and get your answers, because you made very valid points. Uh, and again, I know that some folks at the authority meeting was not, they were not very happy with me because, again, as I tried to explain or articulate, I didn't do a very good job of it at times, I don't think, is, is it, I, I, I don't have a vote in this. The board doesn't have a vote. There are options out there, and I know you guys wanted to, to be able to go straight. to, to be able to go straight to, to jail and don't go to jail and collect $200 or anything like that, but you have to go through the process. When the train leaves the station here with the zoning application, we have to go through it, but I think you bring up, you have a lot of very smart and talented people that have done their homework and the people in the zoning hearing board, they're like you, me and everybody here. They, they understand what they're going through, they'll listen and they'll make some judgments, but you want to stack the deck the best you can, so go there, organize, that would be my recommendation to them.
Bill, did you have...
Hey, John, I, yeah, I, I, I understand that. The issue I guess I have is, you know, I, I, I will, I, I do plan on making a motion to engage here requesting status without making, without taking a position currently. I mean, anything goes down, it comes down, but I just, I just think the only way I get it, residents will show up, I mean, I can show up as a resident, but, you know, I, I would like to hear them, do they have alternatives? Did they look at alternatives? I think it's the only way we get questions answered, so I, I would like to make that motion that we engage without taking a position.
The only problem I have with that, well, I don't know how we direct Patrick then.
That was going to be my question.
Because I know I won't be able to attend the meeting or have another meeting that evening.
I think at this point, it's your motion, Bill, but I, I think at this point, if we're, if we're going to engage in it, I think we have to take the position of opposing it based on the information we have. If, if you, you know, if, if you guys are agreeable, based on the information we have, we're, we're not convinced that it belongs there or whatever, I, I think we would make that, you know, that, that would be my opinion, but it's your motion.
Yeah, I, I know, I do like that, based on the information we have, I mean, I'm not, I'm not sitting here, Jack, I, I don't, because I don't disagree with you, I mean, I like my cell phone service, I get the community needs, you know, cell phone service broadband to be successful, so, I, I just want to know what, are there alternatives there? Like, I, I mean, again, I went like this, you know, 200 and how many feet from, you know, my property, I mean, get, listen, I get it, it's not that far from buying property, I am in that, you know, development, it's farther away from me, but, you know, I, I just think, you know, like you point out, you know, Jack and Faith, like, we don't have, you know, control of these boards, once we appoint them, they are quasi judicial agencies and, you know, maybe it's time to at least weigh in and ask, okay, we're, we're opposed unless you, you know, present to us why it can only go there and the other alternatives you look for. So, I amend my motion.
So...
To, to oppose based on the current information that we have available.
Okay, Patrick's jumping at the bit, hang on one second.
I'm hearing where the board is and I think you're not sure exactly if you want to take a position and if you do, you're almost looking at it's going to be an opposition. One potential result of this is going to be, if you want to consider a motion authorizing me to attend and oppose, unless Verizon were to maybe agree to get a continuance of the hearing and then ask that they come to one of your meetings and explain to you, or, I mean, there are applicants that will.
Okay.
If there's a significant concern, Bill...
I like that motion better.
I mean, they will...
I don't, I don't know that I, I don't know that I do though, Bill, because like, it's, it's their problem, not, not our problem.
Yeah.
Well, that's, yeah, that's also true.
I mean, if I was trying to put that cell tower there, that's what I would have sent to the residents, hey, I know you might not like this, but here's why it works there instead of, from what I gather, we're putting this up, tough shit.
To put it bluntly, yeah. All right, so the motion that we have right now, Bill, if I'm understanding this correctly, is at this point, we're opposing it based on the information that we have. Is that your motion?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'm seconded.
Okay, do I have any questions, comments from anyone?
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
In the Verizon paperwork they submitted to the township, there is, they did have a receipt in there to say coverage is lacking in cell phone area by township, that was their reason. That's all they gave on their application paperwork.
Which is true.
No, I'm not saying...
Yeah. We'd like more information than that.
Yes, well, there's two other options, especially with Indian zoning laws, it has to be more than 3,000 feet away from another structure and it's not, the one behind the Campbelltown Fire Hall is 2,013, 2,083, 2,085, versus...
Hang on one second.
You have a motion and a second offer?
Yep.
I would not talk past the sale.
Okay, well, I asked for any more public input, so, that's my, that's my, that's it, don't be sorry, you're fine. All right, yeah.
I would just like to say, I'm always very frustrated when people say they can't do anything because it feels like giving up to me, so I appreciate the board's effort here and trying to help us move this forward and, you know, we, we're, we're here to try to support you also in any way we can, not that we'll be very good at it, but we'll do our best.
I'm sure you'd be great.
We want you to continue to support us and look at these alternatives and make sure we met them all fully and apply the variant, or apply the zoning laws as they exist, which sort of made sense, especially from where I'm sitting right now.
So, just so I'm clear on the motion, the motion is to authorize me to go to the hearing and oppose the application based on the information you have before you at this point in time.
Correct.
Yes. Anymore?
Would you like more information sent to you from us or do you feel like you have sufficient...
I think we need Verizon to tell us more information if they so choose. Yes?
Yes.
Bill?
Agreed.
Do you need anything?
Yeah, agreed, and, and, you know, if they don't, based on that information, I'm guessing your bows and see what happens.
Yes. All right, so, a motion, second, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right. Patrick, yeah?
Great. I, I want to, I want to make clear to everyone here, I don't represent you, I represent the township, and although right now you may think our positions are the same, there is the potential that they're not going to be the same at some point in time, so don't, I would, if you have a vested interest, if you're concerned with this application, go to that zoning hearing, I'm not going on your behalf, I'm going on behalf of the board.
Agree, agree, show up. Yeah, that's it, agree.
Good point.
Yeah, it's not just all going to magically happen.
No, we understand that, but there's definitely some, some sway that you have whether you think you do or not and the role of this, and if you recommend...
We will, but, I mean, the, the folks on the zoning hearing board are going to sit up here and they're your neighbors too, so they're, you know, you're...
I understand.
You're going to swing, you're going to swing a large hammer when you're, you know, when you're pleading to them, so I would encourage you and everybody else that has an interest...
We're already planning to be here, so you don't have to tell us to attend, so...
It'll be a lot more, that's why they're moving the fire hall.
Hence, John suggested we move it to the fire hall.
I think it has something to do with that.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Can I ask one question and I don't have anything in it, that I just don't understand? If, if the tower needs a 500-foot variance away from anything and she's 277 feet away, does the zoning board say, that's okay with us, we approve that variance?
That's their job.
Yes.
They could, yeah.
They could, that's one of their options.
Yeah, there are, there are different, different types of variance, that's a dimensional variance and there are certain conditions that the applicant Verizon will have to meet in order for the zoning hearing board to issue that type of decision, but that's, that's, that's for the zoning hearing board to weigh the evidence before them.
What is the height for this tower supposed to be?
145 feet.
120 and 5 foot, like they're all...
And that's, it needs a variance as well, a height variance, it's open height variance.
So, there are certain parameters that a zoning hearing board should adhere to, right? That you have to prove, I, there's different...
There's factors.
Factors that they have...
Is there a hardship, does, is it, was it a, did they put this hardship on themselves? Is it going to be a detrimental impact to the neighboring community? Does it not fit in with the neighborhood? There's a number, there's a list of factors.
That they have to consider.
Yeah.
I mean, they can't just willy-nilly say, oh, I love Verizon, yep, you're in, I mean, there are, yeah, there are things they have to adhere to. Yeah?
Hey, Faith?
Yeah.
I, I can base it and I just won't be able to talk for a little bit here.
Okay, that's fine, more on good and welfare. So, yeah, you just keep listening unless you have something to add.
All right.
Okay.
Thanks.
Anybody have anything else to add to the meeting this evening? Yes?
Oh, two things, actually.
Sure.
I am a member on the board at the Lawn Fire Department and I want to assure the public that Ron's opinion this evening in his letter does not represent the faultful intent of the board of the Lawn Fire Department. We are 10 members that have always had the best interests of this community at heart and we would not short-sightedly do anything, so, it just, it's a process that has to run its course, it's been in, in the works for many years to separate the two, so, don't have any angst about it, is what, I guess what I have to say. Also, we are selling these here for $10 to support, as a fun drive for the Lawn Fire Department. You can pick them up here if you would like one.
Thank you for making clarification on that. All right, anything else, good and welfare from anyone? No?
I'll just add, I'm not going to reiterate that, but as many of you know, I also am a member, board member there and it's three years in the making that we've been trying to encourage the current EMS staff, that Ron is a paid employee of the fire company, so it's been three years in the making that we're trying to get them to create their own organization, separate off, because it's a, it's, the law on EMS is a paid entity, the Lawn Fire Company is a volunteer organization. Every person that is involved, other than maybe one or two that volunteer occasionally in that EMS world, is paid for their time and it, they, our, our organization was not founded with that thought in mind, the bylaws aren't, aren't, don't mend very well, so it, it's a long process and I'm willing to sit down to any one of you that would like to know the whole history and exactly how it went and offer you the same opportunities as everybody else.
Okay, thank you.